I'm going to call to order this meeting in Monroe County Board of Commissioners, July 15, 2020. The other members of the board are here, Lee Jones and Penny Giffens. And with that, we will begin with the public statement read by Commissioner Jones, please. Oh, you're muted.
Okay, try again. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their sorts. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Right, thank you so much. And with that, we will begin with department updates. And I believe we have Alison Moore on the call. There she is, excellent. And Ms. Moore, whenever you're ready, we are ready for your update.
Great, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, perfect, I think I was like Commissioner Jones, unfortunately. I'm sorry, sometimes forget to hit that unmute button, or think I have. I am presenting an update this morning for the Health Department as well as the Emergency Management Department. And I'll start with our Health Departments. They are in the process of doing some renovations at their Health Department, and so they are relocating this week. And they want to thank the public for their patience as they are relocating to the North Showers Building. All staff are trying to keep up with their emails, having email communication, checking phones when they can. They've had to pause commuters and phones and have access, sometimes through this move, and so they want the public to be aware of that, but they are doing their best to stay up on all communication and let them know that they're striving for that. They plan to reopen on Monday at their North Showers Building. And lastly, they wanted to mention that the Health Department will be releasing a health order. It will be sometime by Friday, and that health order will require masks. That's the only updates I have for them. And then I'd like to just give a quick update for our Emergency Management Office. We have been given a shipment of supplies from the Department of Education as well as the Department of Homeland Security, and those supplies have gone out to all of our public and private schools. And so just for the public to be aware of that, we also have given supplies to our trustees offices this week so that they have hand sanitizers, and we will also be giving them masks as well. We'll be coordinating that later in the latter part of this week in order for them to have supplies of masks on hand. We have a blood drive scheduled for July 28th that does in fact still have spots available, and you can register for that blood drive on the redcross.org website. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much. We appreciate that. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
And at this time.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I'd just like to let everybody know that we're trying to also have masks available for the public with this mandate that we expect from the Health Department. So if you don't have one, we'll try to help you get one.
Right, absolutely. All right. And thank you for all your hard work, and we want to thank all the folks at the Health Department. This renovation was planned before there was COVID-19, but they've done a great job of coordinating this and working with this upheaval. And the lower offices are still open, it's just the main floor offices are moving to North Showers. But yes, you can contact them by phone or email to drop by beginning on Monday next week, and that's by appointment. Thank you for that, Ms. Moore. And let's see if we have an update from Ms. Ridge. Morning.
We are finishing paving on North Maple Grove Road today, and then next week we are moving down to the south end of the county and will start Coontz Road. We have mowers out, just our general summer construction. So if anybody has any questions about a certain project or anything, I'd be happy to answer it.
Right, thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Not now.
Commissioner Giffens? No, good work. Yeah, absolutely. I've heard good things about Maple Grove Road, so it would be exciting to see.
It does look really nice, and the guys have suffered some heavy heat and more heat to come, so we make sure we keep them stocked with plenty of water and hydration, so.
Yeah, absolutely, good, good work. Thank you so much to you and your staff. All right. Are there any other departments that have an update to offer?
There do not appear to be any hand trays.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton, appreciate you. And with that, we will move on to the public comment section of our meeting. This is a public comment for items not on our agenda. And there is a time limit of three minutes. Ms. Dayton, can you tell everyone at what point in the three minutes they will hear a tone and demonstrate the tone for us?
Yes, the tone will appear at 30 seconds when the timer reaches 30 minutes, which there will not be a tone for. The mic will be shut off. I will display the sound now.
Great, thank you so much. So that will, that tone, you will hear that tone when you have 30 seconds remaining of comment. Excellent. And could you bring through the first person for comment?
Absolutely. First name listed is Christine Conrad.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. I am, I am a 69-year-old citizen of Monroe County, and I have a history of having been a licensed nursing home administrator in my younger years. I am today wanting to relate to you and remind you that in July of 1990, George Bush signed into law the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. It is clear to me that this is an important act that doesn't take care of me yet, but it's in place in case someday I should become disabled. As a citizen, I find myself reminded daily with my disabled friends who I pick up and carry to different places, the enormous challenges that they have getting in and out of buildings and accessing safe and close parking to the places that they want to go. I'm encouraging us to look at the handicap parking in Bloomington and make sure that every space that's allocated for handicap parking is in fact accessible for individuals with disabilities. If I park in, let's say, the courthouse area at one of the designated spaces, there are oftentimes impossibilities for me to navigate a wheelchair out of my vehicle to get a person into safely the chair and assist them into those locations that they're wanting to go, especially if it's a government building or a meeting. So I'm raising that is 30 years ago when this bill was passed into law, and I just want us to be very clear that we should not look at it from healthy citizens, we should look at it from the view of a person in a chair or a walker or a cane, a blind person. Those are all facts that are impacting people with whatever medical disabilities they've had thrown at them. And I thank you so much for your time this morning. I hope this relates to you in a way that you can be proactive with me in looking at the things that I've just raised up to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your comment today.
Next up is Jim Shelton.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Shelton.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Shelton with the chamber, reminding everyone again that we need volunteers to step forward and serve as court-appointed special advocates. The COVID-19 pandemic is stressing families tremendously. We've had a dramatic increase in the number of cases of abuse or neglecting of children. And as a result, we now have some children that we do not have a volunteer to appoint to serve them. In response to that, CASA has, program has scheduled an additional summer training. So people who can step forward can start being trained August 3rd through the 26th. It'll run Monday, Wednesday and Thursday evenings, 5:30 to 8:30. It will be conducted via Zoom. You can go to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, you'll find a frequently asked question page that'll give you a lot more detail. You can also fill out the application and submit it, or you can download it and print it out and snail mail it in. Application should be coming in pretty soon in order to get things set up for the third. So please think about that out there, and thank you so much for the opportunity to bring this forward to the public again.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Next up is Randy Paul.
Thank you.
Hi.
Good morning, Mr. Paul.
Good morning, can you hear me all right?
Sure can, thank you.
Just want to update you on what we were doing with the ADA. As you know, I presented an offer to the Commissioners, offering my time free to help train and get people to do ADA-compliant inspections. I said we could do that by the end of the summer, and I would present you with a final report, again without charge by the end of the year, and that we could probably put this issue behind us at the end of this calendar year. As you're aware, you guys turned me down. So now we're headed to court. And most of my time now will not be doing things like public meetings, but we'll be preparing the record, which is extensive, it goes back to 2008 of noncompliance by the county. I just wanted, I just want to bring up some questions for any voters who are listening to this, and that's the question of when the county is given an opportunity to receive services without charge, and it's not that I don't have the experience to do this, I did this, I gave the same offer to the clerk on the June primary, and we had assessable voting, I was involved in it, didn't charge a dime, it didn't cost the county a dime, and we had assessable voting. Voters need to ask themselves, why would the county be so willing to pay out legal fees versus working with somebody to get the job done free of charge? And this comes off of beacon article where the city spent $100,000 in legal fees because of a failed attempt at eminent domain. So those questions need to be asked. I'm totally confused as to what the rationale is, but I've been doing this for 15 years, and a new chapter has to be opened on this. So, fine, we'll go to litigation and we'll force the county into compliance. One last point, two of you are up for reelection this year, and I hope the voters are paying attention. I'm running against one of you, and I think voters need to look long and hard that during a pandemic you're so free with their tax dollars as to willingly put yourself in a position of paying legal fees. For some reason, our government just loves to pay lawyers. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Next up is Alex Goodwin.
Good morning, Mr. Goodwin.
Morning. So, where do I start? I guess I want to continue off of what kind of Randy Paul mentioned. Just with the way that, you know, you're not good with disabilities, your meetings are just kind of, at this point it seems intentionally just blocking people out, and people with disabilities aren't the only one. People with, like, it seems like people with opposing opinions also, you know, in general are. You know, as you can see, looking at, you know, the Zoom chat, for example, it's disabled, and it is in violation of Article 1, I believe it's Article 1, Section 31 of the Indiana Constitution, yeah, it's the Bill of Rights, and it says this, "No law shall restrain any of the inhabitants of the state from assembling together in a peaceable manner to consult for their common good, nor from instructing their representatives, nor from applying to the General Assembly for redress of grievances." So by blocking the Zoom chat, that, this is what you've done, you've blocked us from redress of grievances. And here's what I propose, you know, because like, I'm not just yelling at you with no ideas, I think that in the future we should have a kind of a message board, forum-style message board, not like in the, what's it called, like, whatever question and answer thing you had in the, or the Board of Commissioners had, not you guys, in the June 30 Town Hall, that wasn't very good, but we can, we can have like a message board where there's freedom in the common and people can see it, and we can, we can work this out. And, and you know, then you guys can look at it as, yeah. And there's another thing that I want to say though, which is that I'll hold you, Lee Jones, to the statement at the beginning, which, you know, you talked about how, you know, you're for every person of color, you know, economic status, poverty, and whatever, because Jana in a moment is going to raise her hand a bunch of times if she gets here, maybe in another item, which Robert's Rule says you got to hear that comment anyway. And, 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 you know, people that are without homes are going to want to speak and are going to want to, you know, say their piece. So I hope we follow Robert's Rules and, you know, respect what they have to say. And, and then I want to say one more thing, which is that I want to read the sheriff's June 10 statement. I know that, you know, my issue with how you guys resolve that is the encampment is getting old, but I want to read that, like, you know, there's, there's claims of...
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Jana Arthur.
Thank you. Ms. Arthur, good morning.
Good morning. I would like to let you guys know that I am currently at Shalom Center, and I have some brothers and sisters that are going to speak, so I will raise my hand several times, but others are speaking through my phone. Here's, here's the first friend.
Hello. Hello, my name is Jason Hodge. She's asked, tell a little bit about what we're going through on the streets. To me, I see a lot of my brothers and sisters out here, we're all, we all love each other a lot in this community. I came here because of the love I felt on the streets, and I don't think it's something that you can feel anywhere else. And I don't really have any complaints, that's just who I am, but I see a lot of my brothers and sisters struggling with a lot of social injustice, probably. And I think that, that comes from mainly, just like, just the way you're perceived out here. It's like, you're judged automatically whether or not you, you have a backpack on your back. If you, like, I wear a collared shirt just to avoid these kind of negative connotations. I'm homeless, and I'm not ashamed of it. I chose to be out here to be homeless, to rebuild my life, though, and that's what we're all trying to do. And I know a lot of other people have a lot of other issues with the programs here. We're all grateful, though, that there, that there is support, I know that for sure, but like, the minor details really hold a lot of people back from succeeding. I know that's true. It is a little bit harder than it has to be, and I think that, I think that there's, there can be, something can be done, I don't know, about like, maybe something to just to join, like, it's, it's, none of us are racist, none of us are sexist or anymore, none of that stuff. It's all a class, it's, it's all a class thing, it's like, it's a money thing, and I don't think that should separate us, in my opinion. It really doesn't, we just see it that way. I might not be the best person to tell you, like I said, the details, but if you guys come out here and, and you talk to us, you can, most of us are willing to speak and tell your points of view. I think there should be maybe better, better, better community outreach so that we're, so we're brought together. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Dayton, just so you know, just each person should be timed separately.
Correct.
Thank you. Is there someone else who wishes to speak?
Who wants to go next? Hang on, I'm gonna run to the other group and see if anybody does. That may be the only one for today, if you can just give me a few more seconds.
I can move on to the next person in line while Jana moves to the next person.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Nathan Muchler.
Thank you. Mr. Muchler, good morning.
Good morning. It's nice to see everybody here again. And one thing that I wanted to echo is Alex's comments about having a chat option. One thing that, that I really wish I could do, if we were having these meetings in person, after the meetings were over, we could all get up and talk to our community members, talk amongst ourselves and say, hey, that was a really interesting point you had about how the sheriff serves you differently as a rural community member than me as someone who lives in the South Side. Let's talk more about that. And I think that the chat can be a wonderful moderated space for our community to really come together and work towards a consensus on, on the issues we're facing. I say this because I think sometimes I might have been unclear about what defunding the police or defunding the sheriff's office means to me. It does not mean taking resources away from the county, does not mean taking resources away from the community, it means allocating those where they are most efficient. Over and over and over, studies have shown that if you invest in early childhood education, if you invest in harm reduction, if you invest in social outreach, those multiply their effect to make us all safer on far more than a dollar per dollar basis. That the sheriff's office exists to respond to crime, it exists to respond when someone calls 911, and there's going to be a need for that. But I think it would be such a better use of our resources, and I think our community could have a consensus that we can work better to prevent crime, that we can work better to prevent issues that cause people to be afraid, we can work together to prevent issues that cause us to be divided in our community. And the best way to do that is to move resources from the sheriff to many of the wonderful other organizations like our Health Department that is currently leading the charge in making sure that Bloomington, Indiana is not the next Phoenix, or New York, or Houston in terms of the Corona-19 scare. So what I would really like the ability to do is to talk to other members of, I don't even know how many are, so that we can continue to dialogue peacefully, constructively, and work towards a consensus as a community. Thank you so much, I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Is there anyone else ready to offer a public comment?
There do not appear to be any hand trays.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Dayton, I appreciate your work on getting all these folks heard, thank you for that. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is item five, you can just make one motion, please.
Move approval of the minutes for March 11th, 2020, and July 8th, 2020.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for March 11th and for July 8th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much, and we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the claims document for accounts payable, July 15th, 2020, and payroll July 17th, 2020.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Miller.
Good morning. The total for claims was $5,255,682.81, $2,735,455.67 were for lit distribution for July, $721,223.25 was for lit public safety distribution for July, and $286,801.06 were for Palmer Power and Truck Equipment, which was for two dump trucks primarily. And as far as payroll, the total was $1,599,041.22, approximately 70% of those were for, of that was for direct costs, and the remaining approximate 30% were for all the payroll-related claims.
Thank you so much, Mr. Miller, we appreciate you. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not now.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, just want to say that while the accounts payable seemed really high, that's just a distribution of money out to other units.
Right. Very good. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hand trays.
Right, thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the accounts payable July 15th, 2020, and payroll July 17th, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. I will note that we have received two reports, the first is from the Clerk of the Circuit Court for May 2020, and the second is from the Treasurer from June of 2020. And with that, we will move on to new business.
Move to approve the FEMA annual salary reimbursement grant, fund name, County General, Fund Number 1,000, in the amount of $47,782.50.
Second. All right, we have a motion and we have a second, Ms. Moore.
Good morning, again. Yes, our department is fortunate that through the Department of Homeland Security, money is passed through the state agency and passed to local county government if an assessment is met each year. Our office was able to meet that assessment, and this year it's being done through a grant process, and so I now am asking that you would agree to the terms of the grant agreement so that we would receive our 2019 50% salary reimbursement back to our county.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Nice to get the money back.
Commissioner Giffens?
This is money that our local taxpayers have paid into the federal government, so I echo what Mr. Jones said, that it's nice to get some of this back.
Yeah, absolutely, and we appreciate all your hard work throughout the year, Ms. Moore, and especially when we're dealing with a pandemic. I would have said a tornado, but that was, that's last year's news now. So with that, is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hand trays.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the FEMA annual salary reimbursement grant, please?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell. Next item, please.
Move to approve the 2020 proposed CARES grant, grantees by category, fund name, drug-free community, fund number 1148, in the amount of $49,726.50.
Second. Great, we have a... Right, we have a motion and a second, and we have, I believe, Mr. Malone here to speak on this.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having me.
Good morning.
Uh, the Cares Board is the local coordinating council for Monroe County and Monroe County Commissioners. Uh, each county in Indiana has a local coordinating council. These councils were established by executive order under Governor By as part of the Drug-Free Indiana Mission to support and promote local efforts to prevent and reduce harmful involvement with alcohol and other drugs. The primary responsibility of the board is to distribute funds to justice, treatment, and prevention programs and initiatives in Monroe County. The process begins with community assessment, where we collect data and input about what is happening here in Monroe County. This assessment provides the framework for our community plan, which lists objectives or steps that can be taken to reduce community and drug alcohol issues. The plan is set, um, sent to the state for approval. And then once it is approved by the state, which is the Criminal Justice Institute, the grant process proceeds forward. The Drug-Free Communities Grant Funds, according to Indiana Code 5-2-11-5, come from alcohol countermeasures fees and drug interdiction fees. These fees are assigned by all judges. They're not always collected since, uh, some people are unable to pay some of these fees. The funds are allocated by making 25% of the total available to justice, treatment, and prevention programs that apply for grants, with the remaining percent of, for operating costs or to be spread across three main categories. This year, unfortunately, we had about $10,000 less than we've had, than we had last year. And the, the amount unfortunately, again, keeps dwindling. We have $49,726.50 to allocate. Uh, we'll be asking for 24% for our operating costs this year. Uh, we were only, cause over the last probably four to five years, we've only allocated about 10% um, to the actual, uh, board itself. Um, so again, we're all, uh, asking for about 24% for operating costs. Each category, uh, treatment will receive $12,908.83. Justice, $12,908.83 as well. Prevention, $12,908.84. And then the Cares Council itself, um, $11,000. I can go through, um, each category and who's getting funded and the amounts if you want me to.
That, that would be great, Mr. Malone, please.
I'll, I'll read a little narrative to each one, so you have an idea as to what, what it's for as well. Uh, the justice category includes Monroe County Drug Treatment Court for $2,607, or $6,003.77. We use this money to randomize drug tests as intervention tools to monitor offenders of substance use while under the supervision of the Drug Court Program and other problem-solving courts as well. We just don't use it for Drug Court. We use it for Mental Health Court, Reentry Court, and Veterans Court as well, um, the Instant Cups. Secondly, in the justice category, $578.15 to the Monroe Circuit Court Community Corrections for alcohol testing, which are PBTs, or known as portable breathalyzers, ALCA sensors. Uh, we use these alcohol breaths as intervention tools to monitor offenders' alcohol use while under the, uh, supervision of probation, community corrections, at day reporting, during field, and during field visits as well for those that are out on house arrest or home detention. The third, uh, program receiving, um, money, uh, from the justice category, they actually submitted two grants, and we're funding both of them. One, uh, is the, it's for New Leaf, New Life, and $5,041.70. Uh, New Leaf, New Life provides recovery skills to clients who have recently left jail or prison. Funds will go to staff to work with people to help them achieve empowering employment in the community, uh, with a focus on people coming out of incarceration. The second one, that's for life employment. The second one is for life reentry from New Leaf, New Life, in the amount of $4,685.21. Again, uh, New Leaf, New Life is, provides recovery skills to clients who have recently been, um, let out of jail or prison. And the funds will go to staff as well, um, for those people coming out of, or from incarceration from jail or prison as well. The second category, um, treatment intervention category, uh, we have one, two, three, three, uh, grantees in that section. Amethyst House will receive two, one for the Women's House, and one's for the Men, for the Men's House. Uh, and Men's House will receive $4,306.71. And Amethyst House provides, uh, transitional housing, outpatient counseling, and supportive services to men recovering from addictions. Amethyst House also provides drug and alcohol treatment to men, which includes gender-specific therapy groups and intense relapse prevention programs. The Women's House is gonna receive $4,301.06. Um, basically the same as the Men's, provide transitional housing, outpatient counseling, and supportive services to women recovering from addictions and their dependent children. Amethyst House provides drug and alcohol treatment to women, which includes gender-specific therapy groups and an intense relapse prevention program as well. The third and final, uh, grantee in this category is Courage to Change, in the amount of $4,301.06. Courage to Change is a sober living environment, provides peer-supported transitional and permanent housing options to people affected by substance abuse and their immediate family. As a way to provide peer-to-peer and transistorecovery opportunities. The third and final category, excuse me, is the prevention category. And we have three grantees in that section as well. First is Big Brothers, Big Sisters. It's a community-based one-to-one program in the amount of $4,315.60. Uh, Big Brothers, Big Sisters provides youth mentoring organizations that matches adult volunteers to child, children in a variety of programs. The money will be used for one-to-one program case management services and enhanced team programming for high-risk teen-aged youth. Secondly, the Shalom Center for Crawford Homes Program, in the amount of $4,241.10. Shalom Center operates the Crawford Homes Program. It's a 25 one-bed, uh, housing unit at Crawford House. Funds are for a halftime position for a licensed drug and alcohol counselor to provide counseling and programming directly to applicants and residents who are experiencing addiction issues. Lastly, uh, the Indiana Recovery Alliance, um, is receiving $4,352.14. And the Indiana Recovery Alliance, otherwise known as IRA, offers low-barrier services and variety of outreach methods to empower participants to reduce harmful involvement with ATODs, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Funds are for the purchase of naloxone and the creation of naloxone hubs to increase accessibility in local neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, in looking over the material in the, in, in our packet, it's clear that more money needs to be made available for these types of intervention. Um, and as you say, almost certainly, the amount available next year will go down again. Um, it, it does give me some hope that maybe when we finally finish our justice study and can actually start working on more of the initiatives that we hope to get from it, hopefully that's going to help some with some of the problems that are being encountered.
Right.
There certainly are a lot of difficulties, it sounds like.
There are a lot of difficulties and, and the lead, uh, the most of which is that the amount of money we have available to actually allocate. Um, the board, I think, does a really good job in allocating the money the best we can. For the past several years, as I said, we, we've only been taking maybe nine or 10% for the actual, um, board itself, which helps pay for supplies, our coordinator, um, and supplies for our committee, uh, annual committee meeting that we typically try to hold. And unfortunately, we've also gotten to a point to where, um, we, we can only allow each organization to ask for a certain amount of money due to the amount of money we have available to disperse. Uh, but I think we do a really, really good job of that. So if you look at, at the, the amount of money that, that people are actually receiving, $7,500, um, and what they're receiving is probably anywhere close to 80 to 85% of what they asked for, they're actually getting, which, uh, is, is, is good, but we'd love to have more money available to do so. And we've had to get really, really creative as far as, um, how we disperse the money. Um, like I said, each category is, is allocated 25%. Um, we actually had to put a couple of different, um, programs up into justice because we really only had two or three grantees, or grant, yeah, grant applicants in justice category. So we moved a couple, so that the other two, um, sections received the amount of money that they received as well. So we, we had to get really creative, and thank goodness, the Criminal Justice Institute approved our plan, approved what we were wanting to do. And, um, hopefully, hopefully, we will be able to, to collect more money. I know our prosecutor, Eric Olafen, has done a really good job of, of trying to collect this money and make sure that the, um, money goes towards this. Because, um, even though they may do, be doing plea agreements to where the, um, the defendant may not, um, plead to what they were actually charged with, that money is still coming. She agreed to put that money still into, um, uh, this category because, uh, even though they weren't necessarily convicted of a substance-related offense, that's what they're originally charged with. And she's trying to do a, a decent job of make sure that money still gets charged and collected by the county.
Thank you.
Long-winded answer, sorry.
Right, thank you. There's a lot, there's a lot of story there, so I'm glad you told it. Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Giffens?
Well, um, Mr. Malone and I chatted before this, and I, I would like for him to talk about, uh, what the money is used that goes for the drug screens that's in this, this grant.
Yeah, uh, the money for the drug screens, as I mentioned before, is, is, it says Drug Treatment Court, but we use it for all of our four very successful problem-solving courts, Reentry, Veterans Court, Menual Health Court, and Drug Court. What this money does allows us to, to purchase, um, instant drug tests for those participants enrolled in our programs, which then offers us the ability to charge them less for these screens. So typically, if somebody comes through probation or a community corrections program, they're charged $25 per screen. As a result of, of this money, they're only charged $10 per screen, um, which allows them to use this money for treatment, family, restitution, um, child support, uh, any other necessary, um, that means that they, they need to use it for. So it actually helps reduce the cost to the participant involved in the program. Um, and, you know, I, I made it a point this year when I applied for the grant funds to not ask for the full $75. Had I asked for the full $7,500, I probably would have taken away money from other programs as well, which I did not want to do, which I thought, you know, as Penny and I discussed, are very beneficial as well. In addition, the, the ALCA, alcohol testing, the portable breathalyzers, we use those, um, here at Community Corrections and Probation for those that are coming through day reporting and out on home visits for those that are in problem-solving courts and on house arrest. And we probably do, on average, anywhere from 20,000 to 25,000 portable breathalyzers a year. So we have to kind of circulate these, these portable breathalyzers and ask for new ones each year to, to keep them active and working properly. I hope that helps some.
Right, thank you so much. Other questions from my colleagues right now? I, I do wanna thank, um, the board for making tough decisions. Um, we, we know it's not easy and the funds are limited, and, and we appreciate their work, uh, as well. Uh, is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Um, and with that, um, uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the 2020 Cares grantees?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved, three zero.
Let me just say, I appreciate your judicious work in making sure that what this money is going towards and why. I appreciate the questions, and as always, anytime you have a question, I am open to, to any of them and answering them for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate you. All right, next item, please.
Move to approve the Adult Protective Services Contract. Fund name, Adult Protective Services, Fund Number 8131-9821, in the amount of $272,987.91.
Second. Right, we have a motion and we have a second. Uh, Ms. Hamlin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, this is a request for approval and signature of our Adult Protective Services Contract. The contract period runs 7/1 of '20 to 6/30 of '21. APS investigates reports of abuse and neglect of endangered adults and provides a legal basis for intervention. This contract is for $272,987.91 and is intended to serve Owen Moore in, and Monroe County. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'm just curious if there's been an uptick of, uh, need for this service since COVID?
There actually has been, and I think that might in part stem from the fact that, you know, family doesn't feel they can go check on people, or maybe they're restricted in their travel. But yeah, we have seen a rise in reports.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens? Um, I was gonna ask how the coordination is done between the three counties?
Well, we are the hub, we're the unit hub, so all the investigations are done out of our office. And if any appearance in court is needed or any coordination for services, it's all done out of our office, but we're charged with investigating and serving all three counties as the unit hub.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and, um, we know this is a tough job, and it's an important one. And, and we're just grateful that we're able to get this, um, this contract clarified and completed. Um, and, um, you know, it's unfortunate that we need this service, but I'm so glad we have it. So, um, thanks to everyone who works, um, on this important item for safety and health of our adult residents. Um, is there any, um, public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Um, and with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Adult Protective Services Contract?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Contract is approved, three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do have a question, um, whether I need to supply you. I emailed a copy of the contract. They're requiring a hard copy signature. So if, I'll just get with Angie about where to pick that up, or whether you need... Oh, I just got a text from Angie. Never mind.
Yeah, there you go. I was gonna say, I'm sure Angie will be in touch about that. Everybody moves so quickly. Um, yeah, so we will definitely take care of that for you. Thank you so much. Excellent. Uh, next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana University Proposal for Employee Training. Fund name, County General, Fund Number 1,000, in the amount of $1,200 per employee.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Sensen Stein.
Morning. Uh, I brought to you this proposal from Nichelle Whitney, and I believe that she is still in attendance. So I would like to turn it over to her so that she could provide you with some details on what the training would look like and, um, answer any questions you might have.
I don't see her, um, on the screen. Ms. Dayton?
I think she has her hand raised.
Oh, there, there we go. Okay, great. Ms. Whitney, good morning.
Good morning. I'm so happy to be here. Elizabeth, thank you for that introduction. I was hoping that I could share my screen with you all today, that you could see slides and the breakdown, but it's okay. I can send that at a later time.
Uh, if you, you, sorry, if you give me one second, I can promote you to panelists, and then you can do a screen share.
That would be phenomenal.
All right, you should be able to share now.
Okay, it says you cannot start screen sharing while the other participant is sharing.
It's like kindergarten. You can't share until everyone else shares.
Sorry about that. I forgot I was still sharing my audio one moment.
There you go.
Um, while we get this set up, thank you guys for hearing this proposal. So Elizabeth and I have been discussing ways to get Monroe County Government staff trained in cultural competency and diversity education work. And actually, as I was listening to, um, the public comment, I was thinking, wow, like, here we are again. You know, people are saying that there's a need for conversations around accessibility, um, how we think about accessibility. So that's why we're, this project, right, is an opportunity for the Commissioners to show that good faith and to do right as they train, or as the, as Monroe County Government gets all staff trained. We'll talk about this. So what we believe here in the garden... So what we believe here in the Garden, the Garden is the place where things can grow, and I'll talk a bit about the Garden later. But we believe that education is key, and that it is only the beginning, and reconciliation may be necessary. So we see that people make mistakes, we're not perfect. I tell people all the time, I do diversity education training, and I still micro-aggress people. I still have biases. I am a person. So we reach for reconciliation and remediation, so partner that with accountability. And we know that that accountability is non-negotiable. So this diversity education training is not intended to erase culture. It is not intended to erase ones, self-identity, but it is a way to empower voices, to celebrate cultures across the county, and to inspire people to be better bystanders, better community members. With this project, Project Do Right, I wanted to highlight the fact that this is the right place, the right time, and the right audience. Monroe County has faced a lot of critical issues, and I would say the last 30 days, but definitely beyond that. But in 30 days, we've seen a lot of things really hit home for people. We hope to promote self-awareness and cultural communication. How do you talk about biases in the workplace? How do you talk about transgressions that happened in the workplace that were intentional or conscious, or those that were unconscious? And then how do we shift culture? We want to empower leaders at every level of the organization, every level. So when it comes to diversity education, there's never just one X. We all have a piece of this puzzle, we all have a responsibility in this. And so letting people know that you can be a leader in culture. So why is this important here? I know some people love data, so let's talk about it. When I looked at the data for Monroe County, rate ethnically, our diversity is just about 15%. Okay, we know that, we live here, we're not surprised by that. We're not surprised when we go to the Kroger and you're one of 10 black people on aisle 12. Okay, you probably all went shopping together. You all know each other in some way, it's a very communal town, and we love that. But when we start to go beyond just racial and ethnic, we actually see that about 52% of our county represents some other indicator of diversity, whether that's you're a veteran, if you're a foreign-born person, if you have a disability. I even took into account lack of health insurance, right? That creates a diversity within our community. Poverty, I was so happy to hear the gentleman and the young Shalom jump on the call earlier, because they are an essential part of the community. So you're telling me that 52% of this community has some sort of a diversity indicator, and that's why we need to train Monroe County. So what we're proposing, because I've put together a suite of programming that can be executed over two years, that will get every single Monroe County Government staff member appropriately trained. That does include de-escalation training. So what happens when you're a bystander at an issue like what happened at Lake Monroe? What do you do? How are you empowered to act? What are your rights? How do you report? How do you engage? How do you protect? We'll look at identifying and confronting, what does that mean? And that usually is some really hard work, because you start to ask yourself questions, expect to have to ask yourself, and you hold yourself accountable in different ways. We look at imposter syndrome in the workplace. Some people are like, what is imposter syndrome? Well, it's really important that we know that there are so many things happening to us in the world, so many different cultural lenses that we hold and that we carry that impact how we show up or if we show up. And so what happens when you have a person who witnesses the killing of George Floyd on TV? How do they show up in the workplace and continue to be a good colleague, good community partner, good community advocate? We look at bystander intervention, and we look at cultural sensitivity when it comes to communication. How do you ask a black woman about her natural hair? Is that okay? And how do we get to the place, if I ask you the question and I don't use the best language, how do we still have harmony in the workplace? How do we continue to engage in conversation and continue to grow? So what I'm proposing is that all staff go through all of these trainings at an investment of $1,200 per person. Now, some people are like, wait, what? That can be expensive. Diversity training is not cheap, because what you're asking someone to do is essentially not only shift an organizational culture, but you're really asking them to, in some ways, provide their counseling to individuals as they work through their own individual biases and microaggressions. At the same time, what I'm proposing with this project, though, is I don't want to just train you and then leave you to figure it out and say, here are all the key words, and go amongst yourself. No, I'm asking to partner with you guys for a two-year commitment. That allows us to get the training through, it allows us to assess Monroe County Government prior to, in the middle, and after. It allows us to sit down and do remediation. How do you work with your HR specialist, say, this is what happened? Here are the bias reports, here are the incident reports. Now let's go a step beyond and think of performance improvement plans and accountability plans. And then, after the experience is complete, because two years of training doesn't solve all the problems. This is a continuous learning. I'm committed to also having video recordings of each of these sessions available. And so if I am no longer with you, then you guys can come back to the table as a team and say, do you remember when we discussed this? Do you remember this pivotal moment? So having something to revert back to for continuous learning. So this is what's in your package, not only just training like virtually, right? So provided that it is appropriate, we will have opportunities to get in-person camaraderie and that rapport and that trust. But then also, you'll have access to the Intercultural Development Institute, which will give you some additional trainings that your staff can do at home. It also gives you some assessment tools, and it helps you build a toolkit. One thing that I was thinking about is what happens if someone offends you and it becomes a barrier in the workplace? How do you train individuals to be able to work beyond that as well with a cultural content? So understanding your package. Again, this is the perfect time to do this. We'll do a climate survey. So before we enter training, we won't assume what the culture of Monroe County is. We'll jump in, we'll do a survey, and we'll come up with a strategic plan. We'll take a methodical approach to training. So we won't just lump 500 people into a session together and say, okay, three-hour webinar, you're done. No, 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 I'm going to connect with every staff member individually. I'm going to hear about where they are, what their challenges are, and then we're going to make sure that as we put them into small groups and pods, they will have a cohort to go through this experience together, so that even after the training period is over, they have accountability partners that they have built trust and rapport with. Like I said, we'll do the organizational assessment, and you'll have access to the Intercultural Development Inventory. We'll work with HR specialists to build remediation and reconciliation training. So let's say everyone is trained, everyone knows that they're held accountable, someone still makes a mistake. What is the responsibility now for HR to intervene? We'll look at two-year professional development plan. What I'm suggesting is that this plan that we're looking at is really the cost of one conference experience. One conference, getting six sessions for, I mean, a really great price. And then we'll look at the development of a bias reporting infrastructure and/or employee performance improvement plan. So as I understand it right now, Monroe County Government doesn't have any of this stuff in place. But you guys are extremely interested and extremely committed to advancing the culture. So that's the project. Let me say a little bit about me. I have all the energy in the world, I love doing this, and I get really energized by this work, because I have been in Bloomington since 2011, and I've been doing diversity training since 2011. And the Garden, which is the business that I do this under, is really a place where things can grow. You're in a garden, things are constantly growing, sometimes you're pulling up weeds, new plants. It's always a place, and I believe that is needed when we do cultural education. So outside of this project, the chair for the Monroe County Women's Commission, so I have a pretty good scope of the context and the relationship. And then also, I've served on the city side with commissions and boards as well. I work at Indiana University, love Indiana University, but I also get to see that town and gown, and I've worked extensively over the last couple of years in strategic partnerships that have aided in that. And then, in addition, I also serve with the Community Foundation for Bloomington, Monroe County, as a board fellow. So I have a pretty good scope of different areas, different populations, different groups, different experiences. And this is why I believe that in the Garden, we can grow together. So that is all that I have for you guys. I welcome any questions.
Awesome, thank you so much, Ms. Whitney. It's such a great thing to have you here today. We appreciate you and your work with our Women's Commission, of course, but also the work you do in the community. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
It really sounds like a very interesting and worthwhile program. I'm looking forward to learning a bit more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I feel like we need a lot more information before we move on this. When I was in touch with our HR person, and we have 533 county employees, if each of them went through this full training, that's almost $700,000 across two years. And I'm really reluctant to spend that kind of money right now. And I also think that, you know, I've also done a lot in the public policy arena. And when money's being spent to address a social problem, you aim for targeting efficiency. You direct the money to the targeted group. So I'm not sure, I know that there are complaints of racial bias. I am not denying that they're there. But what kind of incidents reports do we have that would justify spending the money this way? And so I would really like for us to table this at this point, to do a deeper dive before we consider spending this amount of money.
Yeah, and I hear that. So, Mr. Cockrell, did you review this for legal?
I do not believe I did review this for legal.
Okay, so this isn't a contract, it's a proposal anyway. So we'd have to move with another step. I do have questions about how many staff members are involved to provide all this programming?
So we have a team of four. A team of four that will do the, including a videographer that will man all of the recordings.
Okay, and so this really actually isn't a proposal from IU, it's a proposal from Garden, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so that's something we'd have to address. And I think what I would be curious about in a contract is to consider the, how many, because you list out a lot of really great aspects to this program. And how many, for example, is there a cap on the number of reconciliation remediation meetings, which will take up to an hour? How many workshops over two years? Is it six workshops, three hours each, plus the additional? Right, so we need to get out some very specifics in terms of caps and other items to make sure that we have a solid contract put together. So it sounds like we want to continue this discussion. Obviously, this is a really intriguing proposal. The other question I have for you relates to, you listed out a number of sort of these, bell hooks would call it, the intersectionality, right? Where there are multiple issues that people, multiple challenges and obstacles that they face in society because of a lack of cultural awareness. And so one of the things that's not included in here, and I didn't know if it's something that would be available, would also involve training related to gender, gender identity, and sexual orientation.
Yes, so there are a couple of questions that you guys have posed that I would like to speak to. Commissioner Thomas, to that more recent question, all of those identities are embedded within these higher-level workshops. So when you talk about bias, it's not just race and ethnic bias, which is why I showed that other graph of all of the other areas of diversity. So yes, the intersectionality is explored at every level, but obviously with the cultural context. So that is a great question. I want to go back to something that Commissioner Giffens said about the data, and like, is this actually happening here? Well, one, that's what we're proposing, is that we help Monroe County Government come up with a bias reporting system, an incident reporting system that allows you to more strategically track this data. But then also, I think a really good starting place is that Monroe County Quality of Place and Workforce Attraction Report, where a number of the focus groups and a number of the qualitative data suggest that the perceived narrative of people of color or underrepresented people here in Monroe County is not the actual, the true narrative. And it talks about the need for safer spaces, it talks about for more resources. And I love that report, because it really gives us an opportunity to say, okay, we've heard from the community, we know that these are challenges. Now, I will say, I know that the city of Bloomington has really taken some heat about some of the issues that have happened in this community, and rightfully so. And I think that's why the, an opportunity to be proactive on this. How do we get in and train people so that we can more appropriately address some of these situations? So I hear you, Commissioner Giffens, I'm happy to look at more data. But I really would suggest, if we don't already have the program or a process in place, a bias reporting structure in place, that is a huge benefit that could come from this. Commissioner Thomas, I did also hear you say, are we doing six workshops across two years? Or what's the plan here? So the goal is to streamline all of the education and get through all of the workshops in your period. The second year is where we actively implement some of these policies. We come back to the table, we do a deeper dive. So we're going to give you the education, we're going to give staff time to process it, ask those introspective questions. And then during year two, that's where we're only working in groups, revisiting, having tough conversations. And then after year two, what you'll walk away with is not only all of your staff trained, but they've actively implemented some things, you have bias structures, and your HR specialist has a toolkit for how do we do reconciliation remediation when it comes to cultural issues? So thank you for pointing that out, I did not make that clear during the presentation.
That's great, well, I appreciate the additional information, that's really helpful for us. And it sounds like we have some good things to talk about, some exciting possibilities. And we so appreciate your hard work in putting this together for us and giving us a lot to think about. And this is important work, and we know we need to do it, and we know we want to do it. So we just have to get through the, get through all of the bits and pieces and make a lot of tough decisions. So, but excellent, we really appreciate you and your hard work. Any other comments from Commissioner Jones or Commissioner Giffens, or questions for Ms. Whitney, who was so gracious to be here this morning?
Thank you very much. This does sound very intriguing and beneficial. So I'm, as I said, I'm really looking forward to learning more about it.
Thank you.
Ms. Giffens, did you have anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to table this discussion, because it's not a full contract for us to consider. And so I think that would allow us to move forward on another day.
Yeah, excellent, and we will have some discussion, and you've given us a lot to think about, Ms. Whitney, so thank you for that. So we have a motion to continue this to a future meeting. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Jones.
Well, I just, the motion was actually to table, and I just wanted to make sure that we're getting this right.
It's a continue to a future meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have, we won't set a date yet, but we'll just say a future meeting, because it's probably going to take a few weeks to work through this, and we want to make sure that we do it right and not rush it, but also not delay it. So we're on top of it, yeah, for sure. Okay, so we have a motion to continue this item. And Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas. Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
The item has been continued to a future meeting.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2020-32, amending Monroe County Code Chapter 270, creating the Veterans Affairs Donation Fund. Fund name, Veterans Affairs Donation Fund Number 4114. And the amount is not relevant.
Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, I've been working with Mary Elfman. She has been doing as part of her normal course, education throughout the, throughout the county. And she's, she started to get some donations to help homeless veterans. Particularly, I think what they're, what she is intending to do with these and where the needs are, are more of the, she has places to find furniture, she has places to find, find some housing. This is more for kind of the smaller household items, plates, dishes, knives and forks and those kind of things. And so we have donation funds with Veterans Affairs for the monuments, but we don't have any for this purpose. This is set up specifically for when someone gives a donation and say, hey, I want you to buy these kind of household things, or, or really anything for the help with the Veterans Affairs mission. She gets, she gets from them what their intent is, and then she can use this money for that, for that intent. And so this is just allowing that mechanism to happen.
Great. Thank you so much. What a great idea. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'm just really glad this is happening. At one time, my husband was Veterans Affairs Officer, and he really wrestled with a lot of these things. So I also want to thank any community members who are planning to step up and donate.
Commissioner Giffens?
It just feels good. And I thank both Mr. Cockrell and Ms. Elfman for doing this sort of project.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that they put the thought into this. And, and as Commissioner Jones said, we appreciate the community members who are stepping up and, and helping out. It's sad that we need it, but I'm glad that folks are willing to do the work. So thanks to everybody. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any answers.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2020-32, please?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Move to approve Harold Fish Incorporated Agreement for the Surveyor's Office. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138-42250, in the amount of $9,000, $9,275.
Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, good morning. This is to, as it states, to put in a ductless air system in the, the attic, if you will, of our health building. That's where our surveyor is currently situated. And it's quite hot in their particular area. They had been using a window air conditioner that's no longer functioning, and it really wasn't providing cooling air to other parts of the upper area that the surveyor is in. So this will make this, make the surveyor's office a much more habitable spot at this point in time. So we're asking that you approve this contract and help us get them some cooler air.
Right. It's what, 90 something today, right?
Yeah.
Good timing. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Just that I hope this can happen quickly.
So today.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, same thought. Can they do it today?
Quick. Very good. Thank you for working on this. I'm sure they will appreciate it. And is there any public comment, Ms. Dayton?
There do not appear to be any answers.
Right. Thank you. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement for, with Harold Fish for the Surveyor's Office?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Great. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve ratification of federal grant Public Health Emergency Preparedness, which does not have a fund name or a fund number, but it is in the amount of $31,895.
Second. Right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, I'm presenting this for Ms. Cottle, who is presently not only dealing with our pandemic situation, but actually trying to move her office to a temporary office as we renovate her current, her actual space. This is actually a continuation. They've had this grant in a prior year. And it is a reimbursable grant. So we expend the money and then submit the request to the state for reimbursement. And there's no other costs associated with this particular grant. And my understanding when I read the grant is that it says ensure minimum training expectations for public health preparedness coordinators within Indiana. And I believe that's all that can really speak to this particular grant. But it is attached to the packet. So if anybody has any questions, I think they're pretty clearly outlined in the grant as to what they're going to do. Hopefully that answers your questions.
Well, Ms. Purdy, you know, when you present other departments' items, we like to ask you those really tricky detail questions just to put you on the spot. But comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
I'll give Angie a break.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I just want to say that, that if ever there were a need for public health preparedness and a coordinator, we're facing it right now. So.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just that, yeah, it's a good reminder about the very important work that public health does for us every day of the year. We don't see them most days of the year. But with the, with the pandemic, we, we've seen a lot of them. And it is vital work. We're so underfunded. Across the country, there's an underfunding of public health, but especially in Indiana. It's, it's awful. So I'm hopeful that we can continue to draw attention to the importance of this and this department. We happen to have an incredible staff and board. But, but, but beyond the personnel, we, we need this department in, in the future. So.
We do.
Right. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any answers.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ratification of the federal grant Public Health Emergency Preparedness?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Purdy. Next item, please.
Move to approve an agreement with Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization. Fund name, Motor Vehicle Highway, Fund Number 1176, in the amount of $22,000.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. So we, this is a continuation. It's a new contract that we are required to do each year. It is through the MPO. And basically, we have a software program that keeps all of our asset management items into, which is pavement, street markings, culverts. And we are required to maintain that program. And then we are reimbursed for some of that that falls within the MPO for the data collection. And this is what we get reimbursed for from the MPO, for the hour, hours that that staff puts in.
Right. Thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, thanks for the fuller explanation.
Yeah, appreciate the hard work that goes on all the time in the highway department. But this coordination with the MPO is vital, and it's nice to be reimbursed a little bit for this work. So thank you for that, and thank you again for your service on the MPO as well. All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any answers.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the agreement with Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3-0.
Right, thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve ordinance 2020-31, which amends Monroe County Code Chapter 755.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
Well, this has been a long time coming. We've worked on this for a few years. And then we decided the last couple of years since Paul came on to really tackle it. We've been working with the legal department. This chapter is for the use of the work that's within county right of way, such as utility work, new driveways, anything that's changed within the county right of way along the roadways. So we met with engineering firms a couple of years ago, got feedback, went through the old design standards, things that need to be brought up to today's standards. We started utilizing some of the changes, even with some of the new developments that has gone through the plan commission and reflected those changes that were forthcoming. So this is actually to amend that code to get everything up to today's standards and get, get everything in compliance to, to today's world.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
We, we discussed this in our last stormwater meeting. And it's a report that we really need at this time. There are a lot of stormwater projects that are very expensive, but really need to be done. As more and more building happens and more ground is put under impervious surfaces, we experience more and more flooding, which is a very expensive thing to have happening.
Exactly.
Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Well, first of all, this is a really extensive rewrite. But I wanted to ask page, pages 126 and 127 of the revised packet, everything is unreadable. Was that intentional, that all that's been taken out?
I'm not seeing what you're seeing on page 126 and 127.
It's, it is crossed through and grayed out. So it is showing a deletion.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that's, that was what it was.
It's under application, review, fee, and clarifying notes. So, and the, and the, in fact, the, the ordinance number is marked out. So it's right after 755-3.
Okay. And I know I gave you the marked up version. I just wanted to, so you could see the changes that were being made because there were so many changes. I know we'll get it cleaned up with the legal department and get everything correct, but.
I just wanted to make sure that what I was seeing was what, what was intended, yeah. And, and Ms. Ridge knows that, that, that I really wish there were a way to get utility companies to work on a timeline where they, where they have to complete things, and it just.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, like, you know, I kind of emailed you back last night. I'm told that there was a House bill, I think last year, that actually got pulled. Another county or city had presented it because they ran into the same issues that we did with Fullerton Pike, of how much it costs a county. When that happens, it's, it's unreal. And we just don't have any leverage with the utility company. And I just think that they should be held accountable at, at some point.
Right, yeah, right. That makes, that makes sense. I just have a question about the bonding side of this. Is there any ongoing issue with that in terms of, of ensuring that project completions are bonded?
No, I actually, I think this helps address and stays on top of the bonding. We don't usually typically have a problem. I think the biggest problem that I've seen over the years is a developer does not finish the project. The bond becomes outdated to today's costs. So I think that's something that's, you know, being addressed and everything through legal and us and planning, that these projects don't become dormant and, and not completed. And then if you get a bond that's, you can't afford to do the work, the work to finish it, then it becomes kind of useless. But we have been in the practice more, probably in the last three or four years, of cashing in those bonds and finishing out some of the projects. So.
Yeah, that's really great. And because I know that has been a problem, not necessarily with this specifically, but I know bonding was mentioned inside this, I figured I'd raise it. Yeah, and I'm wondering also if that's something, it seems like something, and I thought that was something we talked about, but with the, with the new software for permitting, because there's things you could put in, in a timeline that will prompt a staff member to look at XYZ. And if we could do this with the bonds, I think that would be really helpful so that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm so excited for the new software program because I think it'll, it'll cut those little gaps, and it'll keep everybody on top. And, and things don't get, you know, thrown to the side. So I know planning and building and ourselves is excited for that. And this is also a step in the direction of, you know, trying to bring an inspector onboard. I think it's our goal to, you know, take it back to the stormwater of trying to get a new position in there that, that helps do these inspections for these developments. I think it's a need that the county that we've discussed for a while. And if there's a position, new position that's needed, that is, that, that's it. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely hear that. And it does seem like there is a, you know, that there is a real need because it does save a lot of money and a lot of heartache and cost for, for other property owners down the road. Even just a single lot development needs some review because there, there's stormwater and there's runoff, and there's all of that. So absolutely. Very good. All right. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues on the board? Okay. All right. Ms. Dayton, are there any, is there anyone here to offer public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any answers.
And I do want to extend thanks to Ms. Ridge and also Mr. Schilling for working on this. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2020-31?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Ordinance is approved, 3-0.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
That's the last item I have.
Ah, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the Financial Solutions Group, Inc., FSG Stormwater Rate Report. Fund name, Stormwater, Fund Number 1197, not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
Right. So we have a motion and we have a second. I think we might have had a packet problem, Ms. Jones. I apologize for that. And with that, Ms. Ridge, would you speak about this? Ms. Jones is already familiar with this, as we all are from the Stormwater Board.
Absolutely. So yes, as you said, stated, we presented this to the Stormwater Board last week. We've been doing some analysis within the department, and now we want to bring on FSG to, to take it to that next step. This kind of looks at our capital expenditures, our capital improvement program, our operating expenses, and where it, for discussion for our current stormwater fee. So this, this is the contract to be able to move forward with that process.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Actually, my comment was last, it was for the last one. I had actually processed this out too early and. and there's a lot of coding going on around here.
I imagine it's pretty hectic. But no, you're, yes, flooding is an issue. Yes, you're absolutely right. I want to comment on your last comment. Good. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we learned in Stormwater Board meeting last week, too, is how when things aren't done properly, it really impacts existing homes and homeowners, the properties. So, yeah.
And we'll put out more information. I think we put out a lot at the Stormwater Board, a lot of information, how the funds just have not kept up with what the needs are that we have in Monroe County, so.
Right. And so basically, this is just taking a look at projects, project budgets, and what our current rate is, and what the mismatch is. And it's interesting, because you raised the issue of having an inspector for not just individual properties, but also developments. But that would have a fee associated with it for those who are doing the development. This isn't something that we would have the entire community pay for, but the other projects do benefit the entire community, and that's a different thing. So I would recommend that if somebody watching this has questions, they should go back to the last Stormwater Board meeting where this was discussed really extensively. And hopefully, that will answer some questions. But I'm looking forward to seeing the kinds of information we're going to get on our fee and our budget, and how they mesh.
Absolutely. And another part of that is, you know, being able to, we're presenting different scenarios, you know. If we bond for this project, or one of three projects, what can we afford with operating expenses and everything, and not break the bank and keep a full department running? So that's what we're trying to basically get from FSG.
Right. And when you're talking about bonding, you're talking about this as a revenue bond against the stormwater fee.
Actually, that's kind of how we see at this point. We are looking at some grants. We have submitted some of the projects. The Stormwater Board had approved a contract with Lockmueller Group. We met with them a couple of times over the last month through Zoom meetings. And there's some opportunities for some of the projects that they feel might qualify. So we're still moving forward of submitting those, so hopefully maybe get some funding for those three or four bigger projects that we have out there. But this is just kind of keeping it going to where we can get those major infrastructure projects done to help with flooded roads that, you know, citizens are out of their homes for two months, and they have. And so we take that serious, because we've spent the money for the design, and we want to keep it going. We want to get those projects built. It just is taking time and funds. And a budget of one point one million, I think, a year, just, it will not, you know, it won't build those projects. So we're just looking at all scenarios of what we can do with what funds we have and what we need to do moving forward with the fee.
Absolutely.
And flooding also really causes deterioration in roads and stuff, too, so it's not just the flooding.
Water is probably the biggest damage that we have on our roads, without a doubt.
Yeah, and it's, and just a reminder to folks, too, is that not only we have these big projects, like stiff road and things like that that people may have been hearing about, but there's also sort of the everyday work that goes on, the mitigation of a particular event to just the basic maintenance, back sweeping the streets and things like that. So there's a lot of work that goes into stormwater, and, you know, it's a lot like public health in the way that you don't know it's there until there's a problem. And then you wonder why you don't have the money to get that project done. So, yeah, so it's really important. And Public Works is so good about getting grants, so I'm hopeful that we.
We're trying.
So, so good. You have such a great track record. I don't want to jinx it.
Don't jinx us.
Don't jinx it. Okay, great. Is there any public comment on this item?
There do not appear to be any hands raised.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dayton. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Financial Solutions Group Stormwater Rate Report?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Motion is approved three zero.
Right, thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Thank you, Ms. Ridge. And we don't have any appointments today, but we do have a few announcements, and I will start with Commissioner Jones.
Yes, I'm very excited to announce that on Monday at three P M. There will be a ribbon cutting ceremony for the Stride Center. The Stride Center is a place where people who are in crisis, but are not in any danger to the community, can be taken rather than incarcerating them, which has many advantages. Once someone is booked into jail, they have problems for possibly the rest of their lives. And sometimes when someone is in crisis, they don't really need to be incarcerated. It's also very helpful to the police and sheriffs, because the handoff of people at the Stride Center will only take about five minutes. Whereas booking someone into jail, the officer has to remain there with that person during the booking process, which can sometimes take several hours. So it really cuts down on the amount of patrol we have on the streets and roads. So the ribbon cutting ceremony will be livestreamed on Facebook, and please join us. This is a big step forward for us. Oh, and it's also, it's located in the basement of the county garage.
Great. Do you want to talk a little bit about some of the other groups that have helped put this together? I know that we've done some work from the county government side to make this happen. Did you want to talk about that?
Yes, there's a group called the Stride Coalition, which is a coalition of many of the service groups around in the county. And they got a grant from the IU Health Foundation to actually put this together. The county has supplied the space and did a lot of the remodeling of it. And the county is also going to pay for the utilities. And then Centerstone is going to provide the staffing, which they already have that all worked out, and they're all set to go now.
Great. And Cook has been a huge contributor to this as well?
Yes, I should say that Cook is actually how the Stride Coalition got formed and is operating. So, yes, they've been extremely important with this. I'm sorry to have not mentioned that.
No, no, that's okay. You know, it's funny, because I was kind of going back in my memory to when this first came up as an option or a possibility, and it seems like it was over a year ago. But it turned into something so much more comprehensive than what was originally proposed. It's really, it's really been incredible to watch, and I just want to thank everybody in the community who's part of this. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for working so hard on this. Commissioner Jones, you really, you've done a lot of work to get to this point, and I know Commissioner Giffens has been attending some meetings as well. And I appreciate the hard work both of you have done to help make this happen. And I'm so proud of Monroe County for being part of this, this solution, this non-incarceration solution to keep people safe. Really, really a proud moment. So it's excellent news. We're very excited. And we look forward to the many successes that will come from this. Yeah, so we do have a few other announcements. County buildings are open by appointment only. Face coverings are required. We will provide you with a face mask or a shield if you need to enter the building. And just drop by the website or call up whatever department you wish to visit and make that appointment. We'll be happy to see you under those circumstances. We're doing this to keep the community safe and to keep our employees safe as well. Everyone inside Monroe County building, all our employees are required to wear face coverings to protect one another and protect the community. We are continuing with our boards and commission meetings via Zoom, and you can hear my dog in the background. He's actually pretty far away. He's just big. So we are also accepting applications for boards and commissions as well. Believe it or not, it's halfway through the year, and we're already thinking about twenty twenty one, because twenty twenty has just been such a great year so far. But no, we appreciate all the work of all the board and commission members and their flexibility and staying on top of the hard work that our boards and commissions do. We do appreciate them. Just to note as well that we are distributing window decals that look like this. This is a bigger version. And you may pick these up from the Downtown Bloomington, Inc., or the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We're also handing these out, well, Vina de Lauder Myers is handing these up at the north door of the courthouse. And that's on Tuesdays and Thursdays, ten A M. to noon, or one to three. Just drop by and pick yours up for any business, social service organization in the community. This is the message we need to get out to everyone who comes into our businesses to keep everyone in the community safe. And we do want to thank everybody who is conscientiously wearing a face covering when they're out in public. This is a sign of caring for our community. It is a sign that you support our local businesses, because we don't want to go backwards. We know what's going on around the country. We can see what's going on around the country. We don't want to go backwards, and this is how we're going to protect ourselves. And so you are going to see, as Ms. Moore mentioned, a new health order by Friday that will address this issue. But we do want to encourage everybody in the meantime to please continue to wear face coverings. And also, if you do become ill, stay home, take care of yourself, try to isolate. But also, please cooperate with contact tracers from the state. It will be very important to help contain any spread in our community if folks who do become ill are conscientious about that as well. So with that, is there anything else that we need to address today? I will just say, for anybody interested in information on the next health order, please tune into the IU City Bloomington Hospital County Weekly Press Conference, and that's at one fifteen on Friday. So we do encourage you to join them. And there, it'll be on Facebook, but it'll also be on Katz. So unless there's anything else, we're good? All right. All right, so we are adjourned, and thank you, everyone. Thank you, Katz. And thank you, Ms. Dayton and Technical Services Department, for all you do. You are awesome. Thanks, everyone. Be well.